On Monday, June 21st, we have a full agenda. And I'd like to go ahead and call the Finance Committee meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and we do have proper notification for this meeting. And that's why we moved it to two o'clock. We were trying to do it at one, but we didn't have it properly documented. So again, we want to make sure we follow all laws according to what we need to do. And I'd ask everybody to look at the agenda. Is there any, is there approval for the agenda we currently have today? Or someone approve that for me?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Flowing.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Howard. Is there any amendments to that agenda? Seeing none, we will then move on to approval of the minutes of April 15th, 19th, 21. Is there a motion to approve our prior minutes?
Mark, just to let you know, make sure that you approve the agenda without objections. He didn't say that.
All right. Let me go back then and say, is there any objection to the agenda that we currently have? Seeing no objection, the agenda has been approved. Then we'll go on to the approval of the minutes. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Howard and seconded, I think, by Mr. McKellen.
Yep.
All right, good. We will then move on to the, I'm sorry, is there any objection to that? Seeing no objection, has been approved. We now move on to the portion of the citizens' comments. And this is where you allow the citizens to come up and comment. You have three minutes for a total of 15 minutes. Sarah, do you have anybody that who wanted to speak today? Is there anyone in attendance here at our, our meeting today that would like to speak?
I don't see anyone on line.
You don't see anyone? I think, I know that Ms. Carolyn Smith mentioned she wanted to speak. I think that she realized that we weren't talking about the all joy.
Okay.
Today.
I don't think her on here.
Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to speak during citizens' comments? If not, then let's move forward then. And update from our Chief Financial Officer. However, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Whitney Richland with her promotion. So thank you, Whitney, for everything you've done, and we look forward to working with you. So I think Mr. Hayes is going to become our interim financial director, so.
Thank you. My name's, for y'all, those of y'all that do not know me, I'm Hayes Williams. I'm there, I'm CFO. I was Finance Director under Whitney when she was ACA and CFO. I asked her if she wanted to have one last few raw with the financial statements. And obviously y'all see what her answer was. I'm up here presenting today, which is fine. Anyways, if you look in your packet on page eight, we have the schedule of some areas of revenues and expenditures. This was very similar to the format that we've had in the past. We'll start off with the revenues. We had budgeted about $130 million, and we're at $133 million. The big difference in this this year is our licenses and permits did a lot better than we thought they would. And our registered deeds has just gone off the chart. We really had no way to expect that. But all the sales activity has really driven that. We had some lower performers than we thought we were. That was related to the intergovernmental, and we have state aid that we get in quarterly payments. And we're not going to see that until the end, after the end of the year. We'll be booking that as a receivable, but we should see that at 100% by next, by next financial statement presentation. And then fines and forfeitures are down, they're about 71%. That was to be expected with COVID. COVID was really bad for the court system, as we all know. And the cases haven't gotten prosecuted, and the fines and forfeitures were a little low. So that takes me on to page eight, which is the expenditures. And we're, have a budget of about $130 million, 131, a year to date right now with encumbrances. We're at $113,000, $113 million. And so, you know, everything's at the 81 to 88%. I see next month, this was as of May, but we're going to have three more payrolls coming online. And we're also, we'll be allocating some employee benefits. There's one big line item that I wanted to point out there. The $5.4 million transfer to the debt, to the Debt Service Fund. And that was for the bond deficits, for the 2012 E bonds, which saved us approximately three, saved the taxpayers of Beaufort County approximately $3.6 million. Page 10 kind of has your revenues. And, you know, there was a gap there for a while due to the billing timing. And they've all kind of come back together. And as far as expenditure goes, there's a little gap, but we expect that to narrow after year end. And this really hasn't been addressed in other, but we've added some stuff to the financial statements to give you all a little bit more detail. We can never have enough detail, I don't think, sometimes, but at least this breaks it out revenues by revenue source and where it's going to. So all these revenues roll up into that other, that summary report. And so you can drill down if you ever have any questions while we are above or below. I can always look and tell you. I might not be able to do it from the podium, but I can do it when I get back to the office. That leads us on to the, to page 13, which is the detail of the expenditures. And it's very similar, so you can see where the departments, what their budget is for the year, where they are year to date, and I think it adds greater transparency for the council. But all this ties up to everything that we went through. We've also, this is fairly new. In the past couple of months, we've been so dogged by budgets that we haven't been really able to present it. But we wanted to show y'all where the enterprise funds are year to date. And, and so this is, the format is basically the same out of the annual comprehensive financial report. It's kind of a snapshot. We've added a couple of columns as available budget and percent received. And so you can see where the revenues are, how much they've collected, their operating expenses in detail, personnel, purchase services, supplies, capital depreciation. And you can see what their change in net position is for the year. And, you know, what their estimated net position will be at the end of the year. Now, this will all change because we're not all the way through the year, but it is, it's just a rough estimate. But for y'all's purposes, I have the Stormwater Utility, the Hilton Head Island Airport, and the Beaufort Executive Airport. And so that, I just wanted to give it to you, just a brief overview. I want y'all to take a home look at it, and if you have any questions, please give me a call. But that's really all I have for my presentation today.
Are there any questions from anybody? Chris, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. This report and presentation is really, really good. I love it. Two quick questions, and one's a little bit off the wall. That's what I do. So under fines and forfeitures, the late penalties for business services, there is a large variance there. I'm just kind of curious what that's from. So the budget was $50,000, actual was $136,000.
I would have to look, that'd be something that I'd need to look into when I get back to the office.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big deal. I'm just curious if that's just indicative of, you know, personal or businesses in the, in the county struggling or what that is. So that's one. And then the other one is, do we have an update on the internal audit? Are we still looking ahead?
We, we actually have received a draft report from them. We, and we're in the process of reviewing it. They sent me out a batch of questions this morning that I haven't actually had time to respond to yet. It's been a fairly busy Monday. But I plan on getting back with them. But they're, they're fairly well into the process to where they're going to make their, their comments to us. And we'll present them to council at that time.
Cool.
We, I mean, we, we worked, we had a lot of balls up in the air. At one time, we had the internal audit, we had the budget and, and other reports and everything. We did as good a job as I think we could do. You know, Whitney and Pinky kind of held on the budget, and I was trying to keep the rest of the train moving, so. But we're pretty close. We're pretty close.
Do we think that this committee will get updated on that, maybe next month? Or will that be full council? Or are we looking at maybe August or?
I would think, I would think the possibility is there for next month. But I'm not sure if we meet, the Finance Committee meets next month or not.
Can we give you one? It'll be August.
August. We almost did a preliminary one, but our meeting got so, so many different things, we went ahead and pushed it off. But we were going to have just to a preliminary audit meeting whenever we first started booking, so.
And I was trying to do a flyover today in essence of time. I didn't want to dive too much down in the debits and the credits, but just trying to keep it moving for y'all.
Cool. Chris, anything else?
Done.
Anyone else online or here in the room? Any questions for Mr. Williams?
Yeah, just one, one comment, actually. Hayes, when that report is due, is going to be forthcoming. I'd appreciate as much advanced time with a hard copy so I can drill down to the numbers and, and be familiar with it before we start talking about it.
Well, yeah, I'll, we'll be happy to give you one. And I know I'm looking forward to the results of it, too. I think it's going to help us have better transparency in the financial world here. And I think there are a lot of things that we can do to make this county run a heck of a lot better. And hopefully that's the first step to it. But yes, sir, I will send it to you on Friday before Monday meeting. I'll probably, I'll give you several weeks with it, sir.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody, anybody else?
Yeah, just, just to comment, the financials that are being presented to us are outstanding. They give us, you know, depth of presentation of the revenues and the expenditures. It's been a long time coming, and very well done. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to add two things. One is, these financial statements are work in progress. If you have comments or would like us to dive deeper into areas, that'd be super helpful. I would love y'all's comments. And number two, about the internal audit, we've actually received the draft of the internal audit letter. But Whitney and I have been.
Yesterday at 11:23 a.m.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, we've been, we've been swimming in the deep end and having center blocks turn at us, but we're trying to get to the day-to-day. And as soon as we can go over, we'll be happy to get it back to you.
Cool.
Thank you. Sir Hayes doesn't work on Sunday afternoon, but Whitney, I expect you to.
But anyways, thank y'all.
And let me just say, I've said this before, I want to thank our finance staff. Eric has done a great job leading them, and of course, Whitney and Hayes and Pinky, they have, they have done an incredible job. So thank you so much for what you do, and we look forward to continuing on with that. All right, if that is no other questions, let's move on then to our first agenda item. And that is going to be discussion on the progress of the Penn Center renovations. I think Mr. Marion Burns and David Hill will be presenting. Are they online for us today?
I am. Marion is here. David should be.
This is David Hill, if you can hear me. I'm online, I'm having camera issues, but probably need to look at the slides and not at me. So that's a good thing.
Good. You have the floor, so go ahead with your presentation. Thank you for coming.
Okay, sure. Marion, did you want to make any initial comments, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to just suggest to the Finance Committee that a number of things have impacted the difference in what we projected in December of 2019 and where we are now. One, and I'm not an architect, and I don't know a lot about architecture, but Dave and his group are doing a fantastic job. They're more thorough, and they've been in front of deterioration because of the weather and those kind of things. But I think it's important to, for you guys to know that.
Great. Thank you. Sarah, you had said I would be able to share my screen here. Sarah, you had said I would be able to share my screen here, and I don't see an option to do that. Is that a possibility?
Yes, sir, at the bottom.
There it is. It just popped up. So are you seeing the PowerPoint slide that says Penn Center Phase One Overview and Progress to Date?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, I know I have five minutes, and I've used up 30 seconds of that just chatting, so we'll jump right into it here. You can see populating across the bottom of the screen, Beaufort County Penn Center, and then our team of, Inova is my firm, we've got a preservation, MEP firm, we've got a structural, a landscape, building envelope, and then later we brought in a hazardous materials team. And when I was thinking about this presentation, I thought if I was sitting in your seat, I'd want to know the answer to three questions. How are things going? How's the money being spent? And what is the timeline? So in terms of how things are going, we have completed the condition assessment report on six buildings there on the Penn Center campus. As Marion alluded to, they were in various states of repair and disrepair, but there is a happy ending to this story, and we'll get to that just in a minute. It's a, it's a very robust document, hundreds of pages, but we feel like it had input from every single discipline and very usable and actionable assessment of what's going on with those buildings right now and what needs to be done next. There's really more than six chapters, but because there's an intro and then a final chapter, but primarily it was organized around six chapters, one for each of the buildings. We looked at it from a historic architectural standpoint. We looked at each building from a proposed use and function standpoint, just to make sure that those kind of hard elements were consistent with the vision of Penn Center, and we had a lot of discussions about that. From a preservation standpoint, we're looking at the integrity, the condition of different elements there, mechanical, plumbing, electrical. In some cases, it's going to be a total redo on some of these buildings. In other cases, actually, the systems aren't in bad shape. They need a little augmentation, but in general, it's nothing we haven't seen before, effectively. Structural engineer came in, and just like the preservation folks and myself, from an architectural standpoint, we looked at what's pretty obvious to the naked eye. Certain things are not in great shape. The difference is, as a structural engineer, he was able to take a look at that and will be advising us, and has already advised us in terms of how we fix these things and how we fix them for the long haul. We did bring a landscape architect on our team. She has looked at different elements for the six buildings and also some campus-wide discussions that we've had, looking at trees, looking at campus lighting, things like that that'll be handled, I think, in later discussions and efforts potentially, but certainly as they pertain to each of these six buildings here. Our building envelope consultant, these are the folks that make sure that you're, you know, 95% of all building complaints are, I mean, either too warm or too cold, or there's water leaking, right? So we brought someone in early to do that, and we'll retain that person throughout the process as we move forward, to make sure we were addressing those 95% of the issues there. Then as we got into it, we saw that there were some hazardous materials in these buildings. Certainly, that should raise a few eyebrows, but it's, again, nothing we haven't seen many, many times before. And we advised Penn Center, and they did bring in a team that could go through and test for mold, for asbestos, for lead paint, those kind of things. And we've got the results of those, and we took all of those viewpoints, architectural, preservation, engineering, hazardous materials, and at the end of each chapter, we came up with a detailed cost estimate that took every single one of those different disciplines and sort of the traditional sort of construction packaging in terms of trades and materials and methods, and came up with a bottom line number for each of those, which is what everybody wants to see. And we'll get into that a little bit more here. In terms of how things are going, the bottom line is, we've seen far worse. I mean, we've all worked on these crazy projects. This is one I did up in Asheville that was essentially falling down the hill, so we had to build a temporary wooden foundation before we could build a stone foundation. And then, as you can see, you had asbestos siding four stories up, so the degree of difficulty was, was pretty tough on this one. But again, as we look at it, every one of these challenges here with Penn Center buildings is achievable in terms of resolving that issue. Second question, how is the money being spent? So we came up with a list of these projects and a bottom line figure in terms of to do a full rehabilitation, renovation of these projects, what it would take. Then we took a closer look and said, you know, on these three buildings, Orchard Cottage, Retreat House, and Jasmine Cottage, if you took those three buildings together and put them into a tally based on the county funding that's in place now for Penn Center, the costs of the studies, the cost for renovation here, additional design work as we move forward in the phase. Hayes and I talked about this at some point. I just put a placeholder in. I know the county has some costs in terms of advertising these projects as they get into the construction phase. And bottom line is, we think we can get these three buildings done, plus all the additional study work on, on, on the balance of the buildings. And basically, we've, we've spent, at that point, we will have spent the county funding that's in place already. I would remind us all that we're working off of estimates. I think they're very professionally done by our preservation folks and comprehensive, but it's still just an estimate. It's not a bid. And so I'm, I'm hopeful we can maybe even do a little better than that and have some money in for stabilizing on the three buildings that are not going to be addressed in this first part of construction work. So you've got these three buildings. Again, this is what I was talking about, some stabilization techniques, making sure the roof is, is waterproof as possible and that the buildings are as secure as possible. And then we've done a budget summary as part of our condition assessment that not only takes the rehabilitation costs and gives you a cost per square foot, but we projected it into the future, ordinary yearly maintenance, preventative maintenance, inspection costs, total yearly maintenance. We were trying to give Penn Center a comprehensive, not just a snapshot of where they are right now, but where they need to be going down the road. And so we highlighted a lot of these future costs here. Third question, what is the timeline? I just laid out the next year here, basically, and this is a rough timeline, but as, as everyone well knows, paperwork's got to happen in concert with a proposed title, timeline. And so we're kind of hoping that here in this month of June sometime, we will get this, whatever financial contractual issues we need to have resolved. If that's a possibility, we can move forward over the next three months, July, August, September, into design teamwork. Our intent is to do the design work for all six buildings, but then sort of have a batting order of one through six buildings that are completed, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, that is in concert with what the needs of Penn Center are, and therefore, we can, we can start to put these packages out. So that's why you see a little bit of a overlap between the design teamwork and the bidding County, you're going to have to tell me, you know, what's, what's possible and what's not, and obviously, we're here to work with you and figure out how these things can get done most effectively and efficiently. But per this schedule, anyway, that puts contract award at the end of the third quarter here, potentially, or the beginning of the fourth quarter, I mean. And then beyond that, we get into construction, stabilization, and projecting buildings coming online sequentially. That will be a discussion that needs to be had in terms of whether we want to put all three buildings out in one package, or if they are separate packages for each building. I don't think that's where we're headed this afternoon, but we're wide open to any kind of project delivery method and want to make sure it's doing right by Penn Center and by Beaufort County. So with that, I can go backwards and forwards in this thing as necessary if you need to see anything else, but that's my update on where we are with this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there anybody that has a question? Alice, go ahead, and then Paul.
I wanted to compliment, your PowerPoint is excellent, but also, I'm very pleased to see that you have preventive maintenance costs included, because that will help us in the future to protect these properties. They're so important, instead of letting them fall into decay. I don't know what to do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comment.
I didn't, I didn't see a contingency on the pricing. Is there contingency built into the individual estimates?
Yes, there is. There's a contingency on each one of the, on each one of the estimates for each building.
Mark. Yes. Brian, go ahead, and then Joe.
Thanks. I'd like to remind everybody that we did sign, or we did vote on and approve an appropriation of 822,000 from ATAX funding, I think it was. I can't remember exactly, but we, so that money is already allocated, and I think that the only obligation for county council is to periodically ensure that our procurement standards are being, being acknowledged and being followed, and, and that, that our staff is involved in the procurement process. But as far as individual contract approval, I don't think that's within our, our, the realm of our authority or our responsibility. I think that as long as the standards are being met, that this is all from here on, you know, using county personnel to pay bills and to acquire the contracts, it's all within the authority approval of Penn Center. If anybody has a different recollection or opinion, I'd love to discuss it.
Good. Thank you, Brian. Hayes, should we go ahead and respond to that?
This is one a separate issue. It is Penn Center related. You know, we have these federally earmarked funds. Jared Frelix has helped us, but I'd like to thank Dolores Pringle, because she, she's championed the process, and Marion Burns to get everything in timely. But we're hope, we're triple, we put in to get an additional 1.2 million dollars from the federal government to help offset some of these expenditures in Phase One and keep the ball rolling. But we haven't found out one way or another yet.
Thank you. Joe, you were next, and then Chris.
Yeah, I wanted to say that Brian is absolutely correct. Back in October of 2020, we did pass an ordinance not to exceed 822,000 dollars out of the 3% ATAX funds, so that money is set. David, your presentation was spot on. It gives us a good understanding of what you want to do and how you want to do it. What would you be looking for from us today? Since we have money in place, you've made a nice presentation. What else would we be looking for?
The purpose of this presentation today is just to give you all an update, to let council know that the money that has been awarded is not going to go as far as we originally thought it would and cover the number of buildings that we originally thought, and that we're only going to be able to do the three buildings with the money allocated based on the work of Mr. Hill and Mr. Burns. So there's no additional action. This is just an update for you all.
Great. And for me, this is David Hill again, just making these connections between our team along with Penn Center and the county is invaluable to us, just to kind of get on a good footing with everybody. And unfortunately, with a camera, I can't say put a face with the name, but hopefully we'll get to work face to face on, on some of these moving forward.
All right, Mr. Harma Shan, I'm Mr. Glover.
Thank you. So I, well, first of all, that was a great presentation. I appreciate it. I've got three questions. Number one is, since we're doing three buildings instead of five, is the plan to do the federal funds for the additional two? Is that basically the plan?
That's just what we're going to do, if we get approved for it.
Okay. The second question is, the Retreat House in particular, we had budgeted 75,000 for that originally, and the cost is just about tripled. I'm just wondering if that's just because the house was in much poorer condition than had originally been anticipated?
This is David. Again, I think it's three things. I think it was in poorer condition than originally anticipated. I think clearly we've all seen that material labor costs have gone up, and I, I think, I think we really took our, we saw our job is to take the most comprehensive look possible and show you everything that needs attention on this building. And I'm not sure if the original look was as comprehensive or what their charter was, but that was our charter. We wanted to look under every rock and investigate every, every possible issue with these buildings. So you're, you're seeing, there's nothing left out. I mean, the hazardous materials abatement is part of the budget, for example, that I showed you on that one slide.
Got it. And then the final question was just about material costs. Is there any opportunity, if we see those costs decrease before construction begins, that the funds might be a little bit lower than what's currently being projected?
There's a possibility. I mean, in general, in the construction design industry, we're starting to see prices cool off a little bit. But on the other hand, when people went from paying $17 for a sheet of plywood to $54, they kept selling plywood like mad. So I'm not sure what the incentive as an industry will be, but obviously, we would press that. And that was one of the reasons I brought up the issue of whether these were released, let out as, these first three buildings, anyway, three individual contracts. I think there could be some opportunities. Again, I want to make sure we're following all the right procurement approaches and rules, but if you gave three buildings to three different contractors, it's going to cost you more, more money than if you give three buildings to one contractor. There'll be some overhead costs, supervision costs, those kind of things, insurance costs that'll be a little bit different. So we're certainly going to look for every opportunity to be as efficient with that as possible.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Glover.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Hill and Mr. Burns' presentation today. It really, to me, opened up what I probably thought was in low budget going in. So I think he's done a very thorough job, and we can move forward. And so my comment to him is, we've been hoping that this project would have been over with a year ago. So anything that he needs to do, I think he needs to go ahead and move forward with it. If we are a stumbling block, to let us know. But I was, I was hoping that this project would have been completed, all six buildings, before now, but we're going with three buildings. I'm hoping that we can actually bring on Get Cottage in this whole process, which is about 200,000 dollars, but we can look at that at a later point. But my comment to him was to move as, as fast as he can to get those buildings completed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glover. Mr. Robin, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. If I remember correctly, the original plan was a Phase One, Phase Two, and we thought the total was going to be about, you know, about 2 million. And so I understand this first phase has grown from about 800,000 to about 2 million. So, you know, we're probably looking at, you know, maybe another, a total of 4 million before we get finished. Having said that, there's no reason to stop the project, and I think what's taking place makes sense. I think it makes sense to proceed as quickly as we can. These kind of projects also lend themselves to outside funding, and obviously, from the government standpoint, but also from, from private interests. And Penn Center has had some success over time in raising private funds. So, you know, I say continue tomorrow. I would be very interested, though, in an update at some point on what we think the total now looks like to do the whole project right. And obviously, this should probably come back before ATAX in the fall. The only other comment I would have, I just need to think a little... So, you know, I say continue to march. I would be very interested though in an update at some point on what we think the total now looks like to do the whole project right. And obviously this, this should probably come back before ATACs in the fall. The only other comment I would have, I just need to think a little bit about Brian's comment as to what the role of the county should be in this. And I just got to go back and rethink that. I think our intention was that the county would be heavily involved in this so that we, there wouldn't be any questions. So clearly how we go about the procurement process and so on is probably very important, but I think that's a discussion beyond today. But I'm comfortable with proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Robyn. And anybody else that council would like to speak? All right, Mr. Hill, Mr. Burns, any last comments before we move on?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
We, when we, when the project was moving along relatively fast, we kept the county involved. We met with Kevin E. and Dave Thomas and Ray, and we plan to continue doing that. I would suggest particularly for those of you that haven't been on Penn campus, or haven't been on, on the campus recently, that you come out and we'd be delighted to give you a tour so you can see some of the other exciting things that we're doing on campus.
Great, thank you. And I've been impressed that our council has been supportive of Penn Center. I think we'll continue to do that and obviously especially if we, we stay transparent like we are and do it the right way. So again, thank you to everybody involved. Appreciate your time today. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all done. Let's, let's then move on to our next item. And this is going to be for contract renewals and approval of those. And we're going to have Mr. Thomas actually give a presentation of all the contract renewals. Whenever he is done, we will vote on this just like a consent, consent agenda unless there is something you want to pull off and we can vote on it separately. So again, just to keep it simple and keep it sweet, we're going to do that, that way. So again, after Mr. Thomas is done, any of the items that you want to pull off and have us vote separately, we will do that. Otherwise we'll look to approve them all at one time. So, Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dave Thomas, Director of Purchasing. And first note I'd like to, a point I'd like to make is on the agenda items. We've been going through some processes with our new MuniCode system that actually helps us pass information through, get approvals from different staff levels and then sent to the county minister, county administrator, and then, then finally to the county council members. We did leave out one of the contracts on, on the actual agenda list, but the actual list of listing the contracts, which states who we're contracting with for renewals, what we paid last year, what budgets we're using, and if there's any cost increase, I put notes on the spreadsheet as well. But my asking is that we make sure that we, on the agenda that we add for this one is Extera is the company. It is on the Excel spreadsheet that I provided to the clerk of council. It just wasn't listed as number A through J. It should have been A through K. And we had some issues with software getting that to work properly without it messing up the, the actual packet, but that needs to be A through K instead of A through J with adding the contract with Extera. I think some of the department heads are online. If anybody wants to discuss or pull in the items one through eleven from the, from the presentation, we can discuss, but most of these are for, like all of these are for software renewals. And if there's any increases either due to CPI, COVID-19, or we've added additional software items like for Dale Butts and the Restaurant Deans, I think he had a fraudulent software package that he added to the current software with New Vision and that changed it. So, so to your questions, I think this is something we can approve quickly, move on to the next agenda item.
This is just a point of order. Do we need to amend the agenda for any reason or because it was, that one is listed in the documentation?
I believe the topic, since it talks about contract renewals, any contract renewal would, we just listed those on the agenda for clarity. It's not a requirement.
Because they're in the package.
Yeah, the heading covers everything.
Okay, thank you.
So you said Extera is on the list that is not listed?
It's not listed on the agenda, but it's listed on the actual packet with the Excel spreadsheet that explains.
It's number eight.
It's number eight, yeah.
Okay. All right, questions? Chris, go ahead.
Two quick ones. Proof point, that's replacing another system. What system is that and what was the cost?
Let's see, proof point.
Or last year's cost, I mean.
And I would have to refer to Patrick Hill on that one. And this is being purchased off of a cooperative contract from Omni. And Patrick, if you want to address the issues we've had with the last company?
Yeah.
And.
Might need to go up there or?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Spot wide on, Patrick.
So proof point, that's our email spam, it's going to be our email spam filter. So we previously used Barracuda and it was roughly forty K. And we're replacing that because as you, as you all know, we get those spam filters from Chairman Passamit that's really from somebody else. This will catch that Barracuda doesn't. And that happens to you all, but it also happens to a lot of staff. So we really needed software that was, that had enough logic and enough AI to figure out that those two names don't match and then, then put it in a, put it in a bucket.
Gotcha.
So it's roughly forty K from the, the previous software.
Awesome, thank you. And then the second one was, can you just give us an overview of what Extero is and how that's going to change the FOIA, sorry, how that's going to change the FOIA process?
So, you know, one thing that we were charged with was improving the, the FOIA request and that was like a no fail mission, right? So our current FOIA system is not really a system, it's just kind of a form-based. It was written in 2010, very old. So, so now we have, since we have 365, Microsoft Office, and we have all these other different software packages. Extero is an actual FOIA package that's separate from our environment that allows for a public portal so they can put in their own requests. We can get better search requests, hopefully do a lot faster FOIA returns. Right now everything's manual, so this is, is intelligent. It'll go in, it'll pull it, it'll redact on the fly. It uses AI for pattern matching. So if it sees like a social security number, it'll flag it and say social security number in there instead of us having to manually go through and look at everything, so.
Cool. Will that drive down the cost to the public theoretically?
I think it would, yes. Yeah, because it'll be, it should be a lot faster. And then it touches all of our, all of our software that we have now. So Teams and Skype, you know, all that stuff, it'll, it'll pull that as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Chris, Chris has finished. Anybody else have any questions on any of those items that we have currently on the agenda? I don't see, if you speak up, if you do have anything, I don't think we do. So let's, let's move forward then.
Mr. Chairman, just one note, just so everybody knows, this is the contracts that coincide with the division, the finance division. The next committee meeting we have with PFC will have facility contracts that I'll bring forward this afternoon. And then in August, we'll bring forward community service and natural resources contracts. So this, this isn't all of them, but we're getting there.
Okay, good. Do we, do we need to read these aloud or can we just go ahead and approve them all as agenda items?
I think, Mark, as long as you make sure to, to add Extera of particular note and make sure it's highlighted in minutes that we did specifically speak about Extera being included in this package, the rest of them can be done, you know, pro forma.
Let me, is there anyone that would like to pull any of these and have a separate vote on these items or can we go ahead and vote them as, as one? Is there any objection to us doing them all at one time?
Well, I'll make a motion, sir, that then that we approve items, let me get this up on my agenda here. Items A, nine A through J and the Extera contract at this time and forward as necessary approval to county council or otherwise within our own authority approve them.
Thank you, Mr. Falloyle. Is there a second? Second. Mr. Harashan has seconded. And again, that, that K is Extera and that total amount is eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. All the rest of them are listed there and we will approve this without objection. Is there any objection from anybody? Seeing no objection, it has been approved. Let's move on then to our next item. All right, and we have a couple of presentations today and we're going to start with, it is the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber of Commerce and have that coming up. And who is presenting that for us? Let me.
She's on.
She is on?
Ariana.
I'm sorry.
Ariana.
Ariana, you're online. Can we hear you?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Go ahead, you have the floor now.
Perfect. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ariana Pernice. I am the Vice President for the Visitor and Convention Bureau with the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce. And we also have our controller rate deal on the phone as well to answer any questions. But if you will, I'll share my screen right now. Does everybody see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
So we thought we'd start with the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. As you can see here, total expenses at the bottom, the request of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It is broken out for you in an overview regarding everything from our website, our digital, our media management reporting, website maintenance and campaigns, our e-newsletters, our Southern Beaufort County Vacation Planner, the Regional Vacation Planner, Group Tour, which we're excited to get Group Tour back post pandemic, keeping up with photography and videography, which is an important touch point as we move forward in our recovery efforts, research and planning, the contingency and operations and management. So if you will, there's two hundred and eighty-five thousand here that's being requested. I'm happy to walk through those details after we talk through where we've been, if you'll allow me that detail.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
As the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber of Commerce Visitor and Convention Bureau, we, the vision that we move forward with every day is to be welcoming world-class community, embracing nature, culture and economic vibrancy for residents and visitors with a mission to stimulate the regional economy while enhancing the quality of life for all. Our role is really to ensure as a visitor and convention bureau, your DMO for Southern Beaufort County is, you know, to ensure that we're representing the destinations and helping the long-term development of communities through travel and tourism. And the governance that we have in terms of an organization is set forth by our Board of Directors. We also have contracts in place to ensure the, the governance with the Town of Bluffton, the annual independent audit, the government review at the state level with SCPRT, Turk, obviously the town and county council level and our ATAC committee. And then obviously as an accredited entity with destinations international, which we're very proud of as well. We can't look forward without looking back at 2020 as a global pandemic, as many of you were participating in and part of. We set forth very early on the recovery efforts with Path Forward, that readiness plan, working together to restore our community. It was a multi-pronged process which allowed us to stand the destination as a whole, our Southern Beaufort County up as a whole. And we broke those areas out into these areas of focus so that not only was our community felt safe and it was our visitors as well as our workforce all had effort, a feeling ready to welcome our visitors back when the time was right. You can see that visually through these pledge seals. Also, we had several website details in place as well as alert bars that could be accessed. And then for the businesses themselves, that readiness plan that we were able to action and they were able to have in their hand as well. So with that, we were able to chart forward. We were ready to be, we were ready and, and able to accept our visitors into the Southern Beaufort County area safely. And we did that and we were being recognized through many awards and mentions throughout the 2020 calendar year. Here in very, very many, excuse me, we have many recognizable names with Conde Nast Traveler, Travel Leisure, Forbes, just to name a few. When you look at performance metrics for the January through December timeframe of 2020, we look at that through the metrics of visitbluffton.org and we'll get to Defuski's site as well. But as you can see here, visitors to website by social. So about three years ago, we embarked on a plan with the Town of Bluffton to have a social strategy first mindset. And through that, we've grown our social channels extensively and that has led to what you're seeing here today is that forty-eight point six percent in website clicks. Those are handshakes out to business at twenty-two point, twenty-two percent and our visits overall at sixty-three point one. Our social media again tends, is still trending up very high with fifteen thousand total followers across all of our portfolio of social media, one point four million in total engagements and our social audience, which skews a bit more female at seventy percent. Our hotel occupancy, which speaks to Southern Beaufort County as a whole, is fifty-two percent occupancy throughout a pandemic, which I think is a, is a great statistic to be able to share, really setting ourselves up against when you look at the nation as a whole, that fifty-two percent, we fared very well in that, in that term right there. ADR at a hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents and RevPAR, revenue per available room at ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents. As I mentioned, we took a social media, you know, first approach to exposure for the destination. And so we have been working hard throughout all of our channels. We've seen over, over all of our social channels with this strategy in place, three hundred and seventy-seven percent overall growth. These are staggering percentages to see in front of you, but as you know, when you venture into a new effort, those numbers tend to be very large. And as we continue our growth efforts, those will tend to bright side against some of our competitor set. But again, out of the gate, there's strength in this brand and we're excited to see these details in front of you today. When we look at the Defuski Island microsite, again, that's visitdefuski.org, we had over eighty-six, almost eighty-seven thousand website sessions, total page views of a hundred and fifty-six thousand and our links out to partners at just over thirteen thousand. Our social media continues to grow. There is strong interest within Defuski and people are seeking it out and you can see that in these numbers. So talking through the pandemic and the efforts that were set forth and being sure that we were out in front of the opportunity to ensure our community, our workforce, as well as our visitors, we were able to see those really positive numbers. We continue to, that momentum into 2022 fiscal year and this is the plan that we are putting forth to you today. Our key areas of interest when you look at both, all of Southern Beaufort County, we, we call out the, in Town of Bluffton specifically, the district designation with history, culture and arts, natural historic register designations, including the Church of the Cross and Candle Chapel AME. Many of the parks that have been brought forth, which are the Wright Family Park, Martin Family Park, Garvin Garvey House and the Bluffton Oyster Company, Golegucci Cultural Heritage Corridor, Pomato Bluff and Montage, but also we have Hague Point and Hague Point Lighthouse. Just the overall general slower laid-back pace with bikes, horses, golf courts, infrastructure transportation, lifestyle in terms of nature, beauty, May River. These are all pieces that we will incorporate into our marketing efforts when we're talking about Southern Beaufort County. In terms of who we're going after, the leisure traveler, as we mentioned before, it skews a bit more female, sixty-seven percent, a hundred and fifty thousand in terms of total household income. And we'd like to know that they take trips, they're, they're out to travel. So they're early adopters, not only post-quarantine, but they are, have a friends to travel in general, so two to four trips and they like to stay some time in the locations that they're going. So we look for seven average nights. But we take it a bit further and we break it down into specifically how are we going to target them with specific messaging and interest points that they might have. And so we've curated these six personas. We have family, activities and recreation, arts, culture and history, culinary, the weekend and snowbirds. So we first identify who we're targeting and then we come down a bit specific, more specifically into targeted messaging into these six personas. Talking through how we go after that consumer subset that we're looking for, that we just spoke, spoke about, we're going to start at the top of the funnel and our goal is to really work them down that funnel. So this is a long-term conversation that we're out in front of them on multiple different touchpoints throughout the year, three hundred and sixty-five days, always on in terms of outreach and connection and being able to be refined and give them the right messaging on a now multi-device type of world that we're living in. We want to be present on all of those. And so again, starting broad and then we refine as we come down the funnel, we qualify them, we ensure that they have their intent and then that conversion. And conversion from this standpoint means that we're shaking our hand with our business partner within the Southern Beaufort County. hand with our business partner within the Southern Beaufort County area. And we like to think of this as, and we just spoke about that always-on approach, it takes multiple different touchpoints at several different times, you know, throughout the process to reach that consumer and to bring their, their intent and their partnership with their intent to travel here. So we've tried to put this wheel together to give you that insight and understanding of, you know, we're touching them through our PR efforts, our social media efforts. It could be through our collateral and fulfillment. It could be through one of the websites, that they're seeing a digital or social media post. They have the access to the website, any of our many media partnerships that we engage in. We also research and survey and meetings and groups. Again, post-quarantine, coming into '21, we're excited to have group travel back, and that's going to be an important part to the '22 fiscal year strategy. And when you look at those efforts for '22, each, underneath these seven strategies, there are goals underneath each one of them. But I thought it was important to highlight these seven for you. First and foremost, we want our visitor, potential visitor, to come to those websites. We want them to see what we're offering in terms of Southern Beaufort County, and we want them to be able to resonate and connect with those destinations. So first and foremost, those websites. But how do we get them there? So there's that strong SEM and SEO strategy. We want to ensure we identify and reach the most qualified users, again, thinking of that funnel and how we're pulling them through. Social media will continue to be a priority for us in this new fiscal year, and meetings and groups. But we also want to touch them on the offline pieces, such as the new vacation planner we'll speak about, as well as our regional vacation planner. So these items will be able to speak specifically to those that love to hold and touch, but those pieces. And then we also have those digital versions. And then obviously, with research and reporting, we want to make sure that we're nimble and adjusting, just as we were when we came through 2020 together. We have always had that nimble, always-on approach, and we want to be able to adjust and flex as those research and details are showing us what the visitor is doing and wanting. So some new initiatives that we want to make sure that you're aware of, that will help support those seven items that we just spoke through, are these three pieces here. So the independent standalone visitbluffton.org website, prior to, a few months ago, this was a microsite under the larger umbrella of HiltonHeadIsland.org. So this is a brand-new venture for us, and we're excited to be able to push this website further and give our visitors and potential visitors additional details about the Town of Bluffton. We have created a Bluffton video series, which is Explore Bluffton, South Carolina, which is underneath their YouTube channel, which also feeds into the website and gets a lot of exposure on not only the site, but also through social media. And then alongside to support our regional vacation planner, we have a dedicated official Bluffton Vacation Planner that is supported with the Southern Beaufort County efforts with Defuski wrapped into it. So we will, again, have opportunities to really highlight Southern Beaufort County as a whole within this piece. That does not, does not speak to Hilton Head within this effort, but we will always have that regional piece as well. And that is it for my presentation, but Ray and I are here to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Pernice or Mr. Deal? Anyone in council? I cannot see anyone, so let me know if you ever...
Mark, will we be able to obtain the presentation that was just done?
Yes. Is that, was it in the backup today?
Well, I'm looking at the backup materials, and I see differences between what you presented and what I was trying to follow on the screen.
Absolutely. Ms. Pernice, can we get a copy of what you presented today?
Yes, that was, that is in your hands. I will resend that, but I believe what you were viewing was the actual marketing plan as a whole. The presentation, we will make sure, is resent right after this call.
So what we do have is, is your, is the present, or the marketing presentation, and what you, today was just another presentation. So yes, we can get that to Ms. Brock, and she can then distribute that to everybody. Thank you, Joe, for noticing that. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Mark, just a comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I really appreciate the presentation. I think it was very well done, and I'm very happy with the representation we get from the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber of Commerce. I think they do a great job, and thank them very much for going to all this trouble and putting this together as thoroughly as they did. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. McKellen. Any other questions or comments? If not, yeah, go ahead. Brian, yes, sir. Brian, go ahead.
Thanks. I appreciate it. You know, I appreciate the statistics, but, you know, without having the industry standard, we don't really know what 3.95 touches are, you know. So is there any way to get an interpretation of that data? Do you have some way for us to know what an industry standard would be without anything to compare to? It's kind of pointless.
Mr. Folling, we'll be happy to put some measurements against that for you when we send back through the deck for your review.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Folling. Anyone else with any comments or questions? Great. Mr. Deal, thank you. Ms. Pernice, thank you for coming out today. We appreciate your presentation. And again, we appreciate all you do. We know how hard you all work and the awards you've gotten. So again, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Let's then move on to our next presentation, and I think it's Mr. Wells is going to be presenting for us today.
I am here.
Good.
If I can get the screen to share.
This is the Greater Beaufort Port Royal CBB Marketing Plan Presentation. So go ahead. The floor is yours.
All right. Does everybody see on the screen there?
Not yet. We don't, there, it's coming up now. Yes, sir, we can now. We actually see the whole presentation. There you go.
There you go.
Yes.
All right. So I want to thank you guys for, for the opportunity to come before you today. It's been a long time since we've gotten a chance to, to meet and catch up. I appreciate Ariana and the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber of Commerce and their presentation. It's a good intro to the efforts that we made in Northern Beaufort County. Kind of give you a current status. We've launched our recovery advertising plan back in, in May, May 29, 2020, as we started seeing the reopening take place. And our current status was back in the recovery phase. We wanted to make sure that we were growing our social media presence. We wanted to continue to host travel writers when it was appropriate. We continue to host travel writers and social influencers in our marketplace, and that has been a big advantage for us in Beaufort Port Royal and the Sea Islands. We've been leading, seeing a trend in target areas and demographics that have been changing a little bit. And so we, our research has led us into some different paths and taking advantage of our market being a little bit more open to visitation. And then, of course, our main goal was to, to restore some of the economic situation for the hospitality industry as a whole. Just real quick, key performance, I kind of broke it, I just kind of put it in a summary format here, and I want to kind of roll through this. During this recovery phase, we served over 16 million ads. We had 196,000 goal conversions, over 196,000 goal conversions. And for us, a goal conversion is everything from visitor guide request to lodging partner referrals or passing people from beaufortsc.org to one of our stakeholders directly for their transaction. So we, we have a booking engine that allows for that. We have reservation engines that will take care of that for hotels, restaurants, as well as passing those on to our other small businesses that make up our community. Following up on that, we did have almost 18,000 lodging partner referrals, which was pretty impressive during a time when we felt that that was going to be somewhat of a tricky proposition. What we did find out, though, is that while many parts of our area were kind of slow and stagnant, Cliff Island, Hunting Island, Harbor Island, compared to St. Helena Island, it's the increase in bookings. As a matter of fact, I believe the beach community saw kind of an expanded summer, where it kind of extended beyond just the normal June through August, and it went through into September and October. Thus, you know, as Hayes was mentioning earlier about accommodations tax increase this past year, a lot of that comes from those collections, from increased visitation during the time period. Also, we saw, you know, 500%, over 500% increase in goal completions, which was, for us, was something that we're, we're very excited about. To Councilman Folling's point, this next bullet point is $5 cost per conversion for us. You know, our goal standing out was to be somewhere around $8 to $12. We, we achieved a better rate, also conversion. We're happy with that number. In some cases, it may be lower. In some cases, it may be higher. We try to optimize for a best return on investment in that regard. We earned over $11 million in publicity this, this past year with 178 stories, talking about Beaufort Port Royal and the Sea Islands. We were able to host 10 in-person familiarization tours, both from a public relations side, as well as our sales team hosting somewhere around five different site visits for meeting planners. We also secured four sporting events for, just for this year, and we'll talk a little bit about that right here in a couple of slides, but we hosted several as well. And, and it's been, it's been fascinating to watch sports as it returns back into South Carolina, especially with some of the golf events that took place. But we've also seen local youth sports take off as well. The website, beaufortsc.org, saw 46% increase in new visitors, while organic search saw an increase of 64%. All very positive numbers from our standpoint. Listen, we had some great coverage. You might have read about us in the New York Times. We saw us in Travel Leisure ranking one of the top places to visit in small towns. U.S. News and World Report did a fascinating piece in the Gulf of Culture, as well as Essence Magazine and Gardening Gun, both featuring portions of St. Helena and Prep Island in their coverage. Again, this is only a handful of the notable things, but, you know, it's always a pleasant time to see our area highlighted. We're starting to see that come out of the pandemic as we move forward. I did want to highlight something about our investors, our budget, if you will. For this upcoming year, we anticipate that Beaufort County will be about 43% of our budget coming up. And that's, that's a little different than, than previous years, but that has to do with the, the height of return to the Cliff Island, Harbor Island, Hunting Island, and beach, beachgoers, as we see that come back a little bit, a little bit more gusto than the, say, the downtown or even the Beaufort properties. Now, with military graduations, reopening, that's been a boon to us. It's been an injunction to, to the hospitality sector and a stabilized rate. So we all, we may see this number fluctuate a little bit, but this is the current pie graph of what we anticipate at looking. You saw Ariana's detailed printout. I want to highlight our search objectives, our digital and paid search objectives. Our goal is to increase partner referrals. One thing that we did learn through the pandemic and through the marketing and recovery phase was that we needed to increase the amount of leads coming into our market, into our area, so that we had an active database that we could continue to talk with and to share the, the great events that were coming back online in, in our portion of the Low Country. But also, the amount of referrals that our partners get directly from us and from the ad places that we run is, is, is very important. One of the things that we want to do is we want to cut down on the amount of time that people have in the funnel, in the decision-making process. And so we feel like this, this, this objective of ours is, is going to put our small business owners right up at the transaction phase, and that's something that we are encouraged about and hope to see some ongoing success. We also are going to take advantage of our growing brand recognition in our market. Beaufort Port Royal and the Sea Islands as a whole are starting to become more and more top of mind as some of the great places to visit. It's taken us a while to get to that point, but we, we feel like we've carved out a great piece in between our, our, our great destinations that surround us, Hilton Head, Savannah, Charleston, having great recognition already. We feel like the Beaufort brand is, is sitting right, right in the middle of that, and it could be a great experience for those folks who are looking for it. You can go through the rest of it. We want to optimize our paid social strategy. You know, we want to engage and educate travelers, but our biggest thing is we want to make sure that we are setting the proper expectation, even coming out of recovery. You know, it's not a volume-based game in Northern Beaufort County. We want to make sure that we're getting the right, the visitors that are looking for a market our size. You know, we can't, we can't be all those things to all people. We don't offer a sprawling urban area for those who are seeking that urban nightlife. We just can't provide it. We want to make sure that we're very, doing a very good job of engaging, educating our visitors, potential visitors as they begin planning for the next phase, where we can fit into their experience plans. And then, of course, using that communication optimization and a constant campaign to do so. Getting real kind of data traffic here for us. We, we have seen a reach here that we think that shopping continues to be a high activity for Northern Beaufort County. It happens to be our number two driver coming into this market. Outdoor, outdoor was number one. And then, of course, we want to make sure we're optimizing to the location of visitor guide on the site so that we can meet those inquiries that people are having. I will say this, one of the more fascinating things we saw coming out of the pandemic was the change in the demographic of the people who were looking for Beaufort Port Royal and the Sea Islands. I was sitting here looking at sort of our numbers, that we typically trend from that age demographic of about 45 and older. But what we actually saw during the pandemic is we saw a lot of younger families looking to our area as a place where they could work remote and, and live in a more open area, more outdoor activities closer to the beach. So that was something that we capitalized on, and we're going to, we want to highlight as we move forward, is to try to make them more effective visitors for us and, and more Austin Grand Ambassador is down the road. We do have our sales objective, our sales team is meeting to, to set some new goals for small market meetings. You're starting to see tour groups and motor coach operators starting to return back to the area. We do have a cruise ship business that, that does make it port in the Beaufort. It's not something that we actively sought after, but we are trying to meet that demand as it starts to retreat back. But I will tell you that we ended up with almost 171 leads through small market meetings, as they were looking to leave other locations and move to a smaller destination. Whether that was moving within the state or coming from outside the state into the area, we were able to send out those proposals to them. And George, you can see our goals are, you know, to generate even more overnights for our businesses as we build compression in our marketplace, to help diversify our visitor segment. And I want to highlight that in the next slide, because this is some of the successes that we had through the Beaufort Area Sports Council. Something that we did learn through the pandemic is that when the military graduation went away, we saw that dependency on how much business military graduating was for our area, how important it was, and our need to diversify. Leisure travel did make up a, a bulk of that return, but sports tourism is, is coming on and is one of those that we have found to be very instrumental in our recovery efforts. You know, just this week, we have the South Carolina Athletics Program softball tournament. So I want to thank Shannon Gluefer and Matt Watts and the folks at Parks and Rec for recruiting that event into the summer to help put heads and beds in the area, but also to showcase the area to, to folks from outside the area. We'll follow that up with the Dixie Junior Boys Tournament in July. So we're, our relationship with Parks and Rec is, continues to grow, and I can't thank those two enough and their, their team. We did host the Colonial Athletics Association Men's Golf Championship. I was held at Dalton. Our partners at Dalton saw some great golf take place over that time period, and congrats to those from College of Charleston for winning that tournament. Hosted the 15th Annual Beaufort River Swim, has some of the largest attendants in swimmers and runners that we've seen in the past weekend. And of course, we have a couple of other new events coming to the market that we didn't have in the past. And so our, our, our goal to diversify how people come to market is taking shape. And that's a big and important feature for, for our community in Northern Beaufort County as a whole as we move forward, to give us not all our eggs in one basket type of mentality as we move forward. As with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have and follow-ups to that.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Anybody have any question or comment for, for Mr. Wells?
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Brian. It's in your hand.
Thanks, Rob. It was good to have the, the, the presentation today. I really appreciate it. I'm wondering, how did you get that beautiful shot of the waterfront park in the national coverage showing the, at the Congaree Golf Tournament, the, the Canadian Classic, Canadian Open Classic, or whatever it was at Congaree two weeks ago? I'm telling you, they, they had a drone shot of the, the waterfront park in the building. It's absolutely gorgeous. I think you, you probably got lots of phone calls after that, so.
Yes. We received a lot of, a lot of love from the Palmetto Classic at Congaree. We thank SCPRT for their inclusion of, of Beaufort in, in that coverage, and we definitely received some, some great praise from the, just how beautiful our area was for that, for that showcase.
Yeah, it really was nice. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Folling. Anybody else have a comment or question?
Yeah, Mark, I just have...
Yeah, Mark, I, I just have a brief one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, gradulate the, uh, chamber for this presentation. I could tell the amount of work that went into it and the pride you take in the presentation. So thank you very much for giving us such a thorough overview of, uh, what you're trying to do going forward. We really appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dawson, go ahead. You're on mute. Gerald, you're on mute.
Great, great. Thanks for the presentation. Well done. Um, um, you highlight several areas of, uh, of, uh, concerns, and I, I was listening and I may have missed it. What, what are you, uh, in the chamber, what are you advertising to highlight, uh, native culture in the Sea Islands and, uh, and, uh, Low Country?
Yeah, so it's a great question. It's been an, uh, uh, important emphasis for our organization, but for our destination to, to reach out to African-American travelers, to highlight the Gola Culture. Um, you know, we, we've both invited travel writers that featured prominent, uh, articles in Essence Magazine in their coverage of the Gola Co- coverage, a partnership with the Intercoastal Podcast, which we host, has featured, uh, big owners that make up that community in, in St. Helena, uh, and, and those markets. But most importantly though, is we want to make sure that we are highlighting and meet the experience, that the expectations of the visitors that are coming. And so as we've done in our research, we want to highlight those businesses that can meet those expectations. Uh, now the Penn Center is, is opening and operating and, and seeing the renovations, working with the, uh, Gola Grove and their, and their, their calendar of events and making sure that we can meet those needs where they're at. And then, of course, above and beyond, we want to tell the people where we can meet their expectations, period. Uh, it takes, it's not just about guessing. I think a lot of help we've received, let's highlight the Reconstruction Park Monument there at National Park Service. Their, uh, Fort Row with their, um, their, their Park Rangers, uh, the institution of their knowledge base at the four sites that make up Northern Beaufort County has been instrumental in telling that story of reconstruction, uh, for those guests who are looking to add it to their itinerary. Uh, we see the tours, uh, leave out from downtown Beaufort, Anadega Hall, and even Port Royal, uh, they go out through, throughout the week, and we've seen those numbers increase as more and more people are starting to venture out and find, and find that part of their itinerary. The active day, uh, active innovation that we've seen, or engagement we've seen, excuse me, uh, from our partners in that is just to make sure that we're relaying that information to their, to the proper demographic that is searching for those types of activities. We don't want to lose the fact of what, who we are. The biggest thing though, Mr. Dawson, to your point, that we have seen that has been very instrumental to us is how we can have the local community tell the story of their vis- of their version of what, what they offer. And so, and I'll give you an example, the Intercoastal Podcast, which you can download on Apple iTunes, is the story of our destination told by the people who make up the destination. So Victoria Smalls and the National Park Service telling the stories of reconstruction has been instrumental. Uh, having Sarah Green come in and talk about how Gola Grove and the community, uh, eccentricity that they've had, Reverend Hodges, and the Harriet Tubman Monument, and some of the engagements that was going there. On the flip side, having Beaufort kayak tours, talk about the open space and the waterways that is one of the number one draws to our area. And that's how we're telling the story of Beaufort. It's a, it's, it does take a little bit more than just a, a pretty art and design work and creative, but we are working day in and day out to, to present this destination, uh, to, to the visitors who want to seek out more and more, and we want to meet them where their expectations are.
Very well. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Um, any other questions, uh, for Mr. Wells? Comments, questions? Rob, thank you for coming out. As usual, you do an incredible job. Um, we appreciate all you do. Um, so thank you so much. And, and just to let everyone know, we, we did give a, a time restraint for, for both, uh, Mr. Wells and for Ms. Purnese to keep things to a minimum. Obviously, they're marketing companies. We could have been here a lot longer, but they kept it and kept things good, uh, and, and, and short for us. But, um, unlike other areas that don't have any organizations, we've got a, a bunch of really good marketing companies that, that we've got that promote, uh, Beaufort County. So, Mr. Wells, thank you for your presentation today, and obviously, uh, he's very easy to get ahold of. Anyone needs something, he's always there to answer his phone. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh, just get ahold of, uh, Rob for us. Again, Rob, thank you. Appreciate you coming out today. All right, let's move on to our, I think it is our, our last item of the day. Um, and this, this is our, our only other action item, which we will be, um, either approving or denying, um, the, the budget for our fire districts. Um, and Ms. Pinky Harriet has, uh, taken on, um, presentation for this. Is Pinky online for us today?
She's not.
She's not? Okay. All right, Ms., Ms. Ristland is going to take over? Thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I'd like to say thank you for all the fire chiefs that are online today to discuss a little more in detail than what either Pinky or I would be able to do. Um, say thank you, first of all, for your service in our community and what you do for each of us, um, in Beaufort County, the important role that you play is certainly not overlooked. So we first want to thank you for that. Secondly, on another personal note, to say thank you for your patience this year. We know that the budget process has been a bit atypical, uh, both Pinky and I being new on staff, um, and simply being slowly brought up to speed with a lot of the institutional knowledge that, um, existed previously prior to our tenure. So we've had to rely on you guys a little bit to help us along the way. So I want to say thank you for that, but also for your flexibility this year, knowing that it's, um, been a bit more of a grueling process than it normally would be, uh, with the value of the mill calculation and the waiting game that that has been. So thank you for that very much. Um, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Klein, who I believe is the only, um, fire district at this time, who is actually requesting a slight increase in the mill rate. So Chief Klein, if you're there, I'm going to pass the ball off to you, and then each of the other chiefs can subsequently, um, talk briefly over their budgets, and council is here if anyone has questions.
Whitney, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Bruce Klein, Fire Chief of Lady's Island Secondary Fire District. Uh, first, I'd like a shout out and a big thank you to Pinky, uh, for all her hard work with us and, uh, for her patience. I know we can be a tough group to work with. Uh, the commission and I are presenting a budget this year that is, is requesting a one-mill increase. Uh, we haven't increased the mill rate in many years, uh, but unfortunately this year, um, because of expenses, we will have to increase by one mill. Um, we are proposing to go from 40.1 to 41.1 for operations. Uh, our, we are expecting our revenue to bring in 6,728,675. Uh, our expenditures this year are 6,705,604. The impact to our fund bal- balance will be positive at an increase of $23,000. Our fund balance currently is 18.5% of our budget. Our staffing levels have remained the same for the last many years, and our debt millage will remain the same at two mills. Our total request for operations and, and, uh, debt is 43.1 mill. I would give you, uh, that, that one-mill increase this year is $4 per $100,000 in value. So for instance, last year, a bill for Lady's Island Secondary Fire District Services was $168.40 per $100,000 in value. This year, that same home at $100,000 value will be $172.40. So again, we're, we don't like to raise a mill, uh, but this year because of expenses, uh, we are, have, we have to raise one mill. So that is our proposal from the commission and myself. I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Somerville? Go first.
Just a comment. Thank you, Chief, for an excellent presentation, and thank you for holding the line low those many years. I know it was tough. Uh, you guys did a tremendous job, and, uh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Somerville. Anyone else would like to comment, question?
I have a question, Mark. Just a point of clarification on the, uh, cost per 100,000 for a home. Was it $4 per 100,000?
Yes, sir. $4.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's the increase will be $4. Yes, sir. Not one mill. Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else that has a comment, question? All right. Uh, good. We can, um, move on from here. Is any other, uh, next fire chief? Is someone else going to speak, Whitney? Okay, good.
All right. How about up next? Um, how about Chief Roundtree with Burton? Is he on today?
Yep. Yep.
Thank you. Uh, our budget is fairly simple this year. We intend, uh, with, because of the, uh, projected numbers that we receive, the estimated, uh, revenue that we receive from the county, we do not feel that we'll need, uh, any type of increase at all. We're asking to stay at the same millage that we've had. Now, this will be the third budget at the, the same millage. Uh, we believe that the, uh, revenue generated will be, uh, $5,521.81. Uh, we're asking to utilize 120 from our impact fees to go towards, uh, some, uh, equipment on fire apparatus. Uh, so we have a total revenue of $5,641,081. Our expenditures are $5,665,310. We anticipate if we spend every dollar in the budget, um, that we would be looking to go into our fund balance by 24,229. But as you can see, uh, from last year, uh, after their mid-year reviews and three-quarter year reviews, we tightened our belts, uh, and we anticipate doing the same thing. We're actually, um, have a, an increase of our fund balance of 170,000 last year in a particularly tough year. So we're, uh, anticipating being able to do the same thing this year. Our debt service is essentially the same. The, uh, we retired, uh, we, we paid off a, a truck in the Haberstone Fire Station last year, and in our replacement plan, we, uh, issued, uh, contracted with a manufacturer to replace a 20-year-old, uh, fire truck and a 17-year-old fire truck. And we actually saw a small decrease in our overall debt service. So again, we're asking for, uh, the same millage that we had last year and, uh, no tax increase. Our budget does include a 2% COLA. We haven't had a COLA in, uh, since 2019, so we did include a 2% COLA, uh, no new firefighters. Um, and essentially that's it. I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone may have on our proposal.
Any questions for Chief Roundtree? Uh, yes, Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Chief Roundtree, I, I just want to say thank you to you and the men and women of the Burton Fire District for the outstanding job that you do. We really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, bye, Mark. I want to add my thanks as well for holding the line, Chief. It's good job and well done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else, uh, want to make a comment? Obviously, uh, Chief Roundtree is including a COLA, but he's keeping his, um, his, uh, his number the same. So getting a great job on that. Um, so yes, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. I guess we'll then move on to our next, um, uh, would be Chief Thompson with the Bluffton Fire District. Uh, Chief Thompson, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad to be here today. I'm going to present the Bluffton Township Fire District budget. Uh, this budget has been unanimously approved by our board, uh, for me to bring it forward and to present it today. We are not asking for a tax increase this year. Growth in our area has been very good and is paying for, uh, the growth of the fire department. I believe this is about the fourth or fifth year that we haven't had a substantial tax increase in Bluffton. Uh, based upon the information from the county, we're looking at our revenues being $16,777,000. Uh, we're asking for an, our expenditures, we're estimating at $16,761,772, uh, would, excuse me? Which would, uh, which would mean that we would, could possibly increase our fund balance by about $15,000. Uh, we are, um, we are, uh, looking at, uh, a slight decrease in our debt millage rate based upon our new value, uh, but when the 1.5 for debt millage combined with the 24.2 for the operations millage gives a, a total tax rate to the citizen of 25.7 mills. So essentially, that's where we are at this point in time, uh, if, if there are any questions.
Are there any questions, uh, for Chief Thompson? I don't see any questions, but, uh, Chief Thompson, again, thank you, like everybody else. We appreciate you all being efficient and holding the line and, um, making our job easy to, to support you. And, and again, you guys have done a great job in, in the Bluffton community where I am. Um, you did a super job. Again, we appreciate all your hard work and, and your guys' hard work. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. No other questions for, uh, Mr. Thompson or Chief Thompson? Um, we have, uh, Chief Jones from Sheldon. Mr. Jones, the floor is yours if you're ready to go.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The Sheldon Fire District, she's pulling up, yeah. Sheldon Fire District is looking for expenditures this year of $1,547,680 in personnel operations, $133,100 in debt. We're actually reducing both of our millage this year. We're going down about seven tenths of a mill in operations and down about four tenths in debt. Our mill value growth did come in pretty good this year, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Go ahead, Brad.
Uh, I was going to say, I, I think this is the first time I've seen an actual decrease in a request for a debt millage, and I appreciate it, Chief. And not only that, you guys do a, a good job out there, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
Uh, Chief Jones, I, I, I want to thank you and the, uh, men and women of the Sheldon Fire District for the outstanding service that you provide to the citizens, um, throughout the district. Uh, we thank you for coming, bringing the budget in with no millage increase at all. Outstanding. Good.
Any other questions or comments for, uh, Chief Jones? Mr. Jo- our Chief Jones, thank you again for coming today. We appreciate you taking your time, and again, very impressive, and, and we are, we appreciate everything you do and, and all your, your, your staff and firemen do as well.
Yeah, we want to thank county staff too for the good job they did on the millage this year. They're giving us real good numbers.
Great. We agree. We've got a great staff here, so thank you for pointing that out. Um, and our final is, um, the DeFuski Fire District, uh, with, with my neighbor, uh, Chief Loper. Uh, I also represent DeFuski, so, um, oh, Ms. Quinn, you're going to be presenting.
Yes. So Chief Loper apologizes that he's not able to be present today. He had a loss in his family, so he's out of state. So I get to present for you.
This is Ms. Erin Quinn, who, um, your position is you are the, his assistant?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
So today, and I don't know if the guys all know, so since I got to be in the room, I get like a free mill, right?
That's it.
Oh, so here we are. We are going to hold the line as well with our millage. It brings us, um, for our salaries and benefits to 1.099, and our purchase services, our operational costs, uh, that's going to put us at, uh, 111,000. We have a little bit of an increase from last year. We have an aging fleet, making sure that we have, uh, appropriate funds available for the equipment, um, needs that they have and repairs. And then we were thankful, we, we did have some staffing changes in the last year, and And so you'll see lower down, we did start a part-time program, um, that's helping also with our salaries and benefit side of things. So we have new folks coming in that are part of our part-time program. And then we don't have the same overhead for their benefits as well. And it's also creating an opportunity for incoming full-timers potential, um, that we're getting to know them as well. And, and they're getting to know the island, which is very different than every other place in this county. Um, and additionally, as you can see, we do not have, uh, and continue not to have a debt service millage as well.
Great. Thank you. Any, uh, any questions for Ms. Quinn from DeFuski Island Fire? I don't see any hands. And like everybody else, um, tell Mr. Chief Loper that we appreciate his hard work and your hard work and the staff. And thank you for, for making our job easy and coming in and, and being, you know, at, at no increase. So thank you so much and we do appreciate all, all that you do. All right. So that leaves it now open for discussion from county council members. Um, again, our, uh, position here is, as an action item is to, um, to approve or, or deny, um, the budgets as presented. Do I have a, a motion to accept the, the budgets as presented? Can I see Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve all budgets, all fire district budgets.
I'll second.
All right. That is second by Mr. Dawson. Uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, we will approve this without objection. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, this has been approved.
Is Joe, is Joe reading me?
No, it's Marty. Come on. All right. Uh, so that item has, has passed, um, and, uh, we will move on. And, uh, that is the end of our agenda. Is there any other public comments that we have, Sarah, that need to cover? We didn't have anyone to meet with?
Yes, sir.
So seeing no public comments, uh, we apologize for the length of the meeting. Actually, I think it moved along very, very nicely. So again, appreciate everyone's, um, help and concern and, and helping us to do that. Um, so our finance committee meeting for Monday, June 21st is adjourned. Thank you.
We need a break to get broadcasting to each other.
Stu, how many, what, what?
The agenda and Mr. Summerwell made a motion to that effect to add those three items to the agenda.
I will second.
Okay, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the is approved as amended with the three items. Now need a motion to go into executive session to receive legal advice.
You can not, you don't need to do that right now. You can approve the amendments as drafted and then we'll go into executive session.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the amendment or the amendments from the prior meeting?
So moved. This is Mark.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, any objection? I stand approved. Okay.
Stu, Stu, we have to go back and approve the agenda as amended. We approved the amendments to the agenda, but not the agenda as amended.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any objection? If not, it stands approved with the three amendments. Now I guess we need a motion to go into executive session to receive legal device, advice relative to Buckingham Landing.
So moved.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any objection? Seeing no objection, we will go into executive session and Sarah, I assume you will put the people in the room that need to be there electronically.[109.11]
All three parts of that RFP, which was the processing, the hauling and the marketing. There's only three entries in that that actually included all of those. And from what I can tell, it was myself, pro-disposal and waste management. Well, neither me or pro-disposal were selected or even looked at to be considered, although they were comprehensive and we had some of the lowest numbers. But my question for you is to ask is, what were the qualifications and how were the ratings? You know, how did you come up? How did they come up with the ratings selection committee? Because it seems a little bit unfair or biased in that level. Now, from a board perspective, I sit on the Solid Waste and Recycling Board. We spend a lot of time giving our input and our advice. And this RFP didn't even come up for review. It is customary that all of these RFPs, especially these contracts that are awarded, go to the Solid Waste and Recycling Board for review and for their advice and for their recommendation. And for some reason that didn't, it did not, I don't know if it was timing. That should be a question that should be asked. As a board member, you know, we spend a lot of time to do these things. And if not, why do we have them? The last thing I'd like to add is as a citizen, you know, you guys, the county, the councilman, you guys all, we all, you know, put forth a lot of effort to make this county better. This RFP was, is a beginning to show leadership, to show vision, to create new industries, to develop a process that's new and not go with the same old, you know, thing we've been doing for 25 years. And I would ask that you look, when you look at the award and where it's going to go, ask yourself, where is this going to go? Is the right, right road and right path for the county into the? We all know that the landfill and its contracts and things like that are critical. You know, they kind of hide back in the, in the woods, you know, but they are critical to everything we do. And I believe, I think the board believes that the county should take ownership in that. And this contract award reflects the opposite of taking ownership. So with that, you know, just, I would ask that as you guys look at this, take those things in consideration. So as a business owner who spends taxes, as a citizen, I pay taxes. And as a board member, I give my time. And I do feel very passionate about the direction that this is going. I would ask that you guys give it that same thought. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that is there to speak?
Yes, my name is Chris Fisher from Glassworks SC, a new glass manufacturing company in Beaufort. What's that?
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have a new glass manufacturing company. We started in Beaufort, South Carolina. We bought Parker Hannafin Building, which is an 84,000 square foot building on 35 acres. We have the ability to take 20,000 tons of glass. We put a bid in to do glass-only collection for the county. The goal is to save the county money, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'd like the board to reconsider taking the glass out of the bid, please, and let us handle the glass directly for the county. It's just simple. We'll handle the education, we'll process it and we'll make new material and jobs in the county. Any questions?
Sir, did you put a bid in?
We did, we did.
Thank you, thank you very much and welcome to the county. Any other speakers? Okay, not hearing any, we'll move on to the agenda. Our first items, I'm going to take these in groups. First item is items, it looks like basically seven through 13, which are all airport-related. First, I'm sorry, I missed Jared's administrator's report. Jared, go ahead and give us number seven first, okay?
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman, Robin. Just a quick update on several things going on inside of Engineering Division, some of which will be coming forward to PFC and later meetings. Others are just happening in the Engineering Division. Over in Solid Waste, the decal implementation is still ongoing. Forty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven decal happen each day. The sustainability campus staff is working with a consultant, assisting in potential site locations for a sustainable campus. We just received some information last week from our consultant and hope to bring something forward for discussion at the next PFC meeting. As far as transportation is concerned, US 278 SCVOT is hosting an in-person public hearing on Thursday, July 22nd, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at the Island Records Center on Hilton Head. Home on verbal comment session will begin at 6:00 PM. If any person has a right to participate, must sign up in advance. To find out more information regarding the meeting at www.scpot278corridor.com/public-hearing. As far as our pathways, as part of the sales tax program, some eighteen sales tax programs, we've concluded the final public comment hearing for Revo Road and Bluffton Parkway and are moving those on to final design. We continue to work on community outreach, surveying and preliminary design on the other prioritized pathways. For access roads, the town is fully complete and has been opened as of Friday last week. So if that is our first project in sales tax, we're completely happy. I think a lot of those residents on Northern Ladies Island would agree. So survey and preliminary design work continues on the other road lanes. And we're working on a federal raised brand application for the US 21 corridor project that is due in July. As far as airport, the airport expansion project, we're still coordinating with our contractor. We have some middle documents to get started and we're coordinating that with our airline partners as far as the work, the planned work, so it doesn't go well because of the service ongoing. Passenger camp continues to grow, continue to stay full there in the airport. And John's going to expand upon that in just a moment. Facilities management, our boat landing master plan RFP, we received proposals on that recently. And we should have a contract coming for award in the next PFC meeting. Old Federal Courthouse, we received HBAC bids on that on June 9th. This is the biggest part of the renovation for that project. The final renovation timeline will be determined upon the HBAC equipment orders. As you can understand, that's been impacted by COVID and the equipment. Once we get that order in, we'll know exactly when that equipment is to be, make it to the site. Capital projects, Myrtle Park site work, our economic development project. We're still finalizing our MOA with the Economic Development Corporation and expect the issue and notice proceed to be contracted in the coming weeks. EMS fire station 31, the work's on schedule and expected to have a CLI by the end of this month, here in June. Our EMS fire station at Sun City, we have the MOA that's executed with the Bluffton Township Fire District and the project's going out for bid next week. Bluffton Library, this project's ahead of schedule. We've conducted the final inspection on Friday and are working on functional signage currently. Arthur Horn Project, this project has taken a hit a little bit on the, on the planned schedule. However, continuing to maintain progress. Elevator shafts and elevators, we're working on the interior, the interior, the IT data room and furniture order with completion date of October 2022. In public works, our disaster recovery, continuing to restore the public function preparations in advance of upcoming hurricanes. We've met with and coordinated with our debris management and monitoring contractors and are all set in advance of hurricane season. And our grounds maintenance and road maintenance efforts are in full force with the summer growing season upon us and the pop-up thunderstorms that are impacting our dirt roads on just about a daily basis. And lastly, fleet maintenance, we're working on some several internal improvements to overhaul our fleet services. And we'll be bringing forth some discussions upon that in upcoming year's PFC meetings. So that is all I have, is kind of update from Engineering Division.
Okay, let's move on to number eight, which is an update from John on particularly the short-term congestion that we're seeing at the Hilton Head Airport. And if he wants to add anything to what Jared mentioned about the long-term terminal plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can just echo what Jared said about the numbers at the airport. And I apologize as I speak, we do have aircraft taxiing by my window, so it might get loud for a moment. We are, we're kind of calling it the summer surge. We, this past weekend, we had 3,500 people through the terminal just one way. So you could double that and then add maybe 20% to that for the people who drop off and pick up. So we're looking at seven, eight thousand people in that building on a weekend. Pretty busy. It's the same building that saw just a couple of months ago at the end of March, which is when the season was already getting into its stride. We're seeing about nineteen hundred and fifty people. So we doubled that in just a couple of months with the same building. So we're definitely seeing the surge. And some of the things that we've done, really just in the past three weeks or so, really since Memorial Day weekend, things that we've done inside the terminal, this is just the airports actions that we've taken. We've had a lot more coordination with TSA. TSA is trying to kind of meter the throughput. And the reason for that is that our whole rooms that are post-security are not that big. So we can't have everybody show up early and then just go through the checkpoint and sit in the, in the gate areas waiting for their aircraft because there's just not enough room. So we're coordinating with TSA to meter just the next flights through because we can fit three-plus flights on the other side, but we can't fit everybody. Another thing that we've done to that end is to update our flight information displays, which we just call FIDS. And those are the monitors in the terminal in the lobby area that show you which flights are departing and arriving. And we've got a screen now that alternates with those flights and now shows only the two or three flights that are being accepted through the TSA checkpoint at any given time. And so what we're hoping to do, and that's paired with the Public Service announcement County Channel helped produce for us. And we're hoping that through the vocal cues and the visual cues, that more and more people will, will wait to get in line. And that way you don't have to stand there for a couple hours or however long it takes to get through that line. You can just wait until your flight is going to be called through. We've also, just last weekend, just Friday before the weekend started, we added a pop-up alert on our website. So as soon as you go to the airport website, HiltonHeadAirport.com, you'll be greeted with an alert right there on the screen. And it'll talk to you about the busy summer traffic and the flow. And it'll explain to you that folks are only going through the checkpoint when their flight is called. That's also been up on social media over the weekend as well. And that'll continue to display, just so that folks know when they're planning their travels or when they're checking out of their hotels or their short-term rentals, that they'll understand what to expect when they get to the airport. We've also coordinated all of this with the airlines. We have pretty frequent informal station manager meetings. And usually that will take part in a conference room or maybe via, you know, Zoom or WebEx. Now it's usually me or my deputy going over to the terminal and just walking through and just getting ahold of the station managers when we can to pass word because things are changing so rapidly. I did that just this morning myself. Let's see, also having Chris on board as the PIO has been great so far. We're already trying to coordinate some messages and make sure that we tell the story of what's going on at the airport. So Chris is going to help us with our social media and with some website ideas and also with, of course, our news releases as they go out. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll have installed a large screen monitor that will be right next to the TSA checkpoint so that the folks who are, who are in line and walking through the lobby will be able to see this large display. And on that display will be images of the new terminal. So we've got the renderings from the architects and we'll cycle through on a loop so that folks can see, you know, while they may be standing in line now in a small building, within a couple of years, they'll have a new building that's under their experience. So we'll have that up here just the next couple of days. We're also coordinating with different trolley services and shuttle services with resorts and also with Breeze Trolley. We've gotten an ad up on our website for Breeze. And they're actually helping out by taking basically advanced reservations. So if there are travelers who know that they need to get picked up at the airport, they can schedule ahead of time with the Breeze Trolley and have the Trolley come and pick them up when their flight arrives. So it works almost like what an Uber does. Let's see, also, we've got a construction project coming up. We, we kind of look at every different option that we can do to make things better. One of those, looks like we're going to be able to improve, add a little bit more space to the TSA checkpoint. And so we're working with contractors now. We're actually going to break through another wall in the terminal and put a new door in and a new exit lane basically for folks who deplane the aircraft. So just because the structure's there doesn't mean that we won't change it if it's going to end up being a positive result for the customers. So we're literally looking at every option we can to improve the experience for our customers. And along those lines, is, this is kind of funny, it gets some people to laugh, but we have asked, we have friends who are four-legged, the comfort dogs and therapy dogs, usually the comfort dogs. We've asked them just to come in more often. So on the weekends, you know, as folks are busier, stressed about travel, it's often nice to have a nice smiling golden retriever there to, to meet you or to take your kids' minds off of the stress of travel. So believe it or not, that really has a good positive effect there in the terminal. And just before this meeting, I got off a call with United Airlines. You may remember they're the ones who are, they're seasonal. And they just came in with those additional six cities with the point-to-point service. So they took us up to 16 cities that we now serve. Just remember, two years ago, we served a single city. In two years, went from, from one to 16. So it's been a pretty quick growth spurt. But I had a plan with United, planning folks are, called with United Planning. And they're very cognizant of the fact that we're pretty congested at the airport. And so what they're trying to do is basically inject a little bit of sunshine between some of their flights. So they've already changed some of the July schedules. And then they're going to change the August schedules a little bit. So the folks on the ground have a little bit more breathing room. And so our aircraft control is having a little bit easier job of moving the aircraft around the airport as well. So glad to have that happen with United. I know the other airlines are also looking at that. We did put out a request to them to, to look at their scheduling. So it seems to be working little by little. And so far, we've seen the TSA checkpoint wait times reduce. From on Memorial Day, we had max wait times of 44 minutes. This past weekend, with basically the same number of travelers going through the terminal, that wait time was down from 44 minutes to 18 minutes. So something's working a little bit better there. So we'll continue to sharpen that saw and make things better as we go through the summer. That's the short-term update. On the long-term side, we still wait for a call back from some of our friends at the State House and also at the, on the federal level for some of that funding for the terminal. As I said, we will display the renderings of the new terminal building inside the current terminal so folks can see what's coming. But we definitely are, you know, looking forward to getting that moving as soon as we can just close up that funding picture on that project. If there's, are there any questions there? I know we've got some action items to get into as well, but I'll take any questions at that point.
Okay, well, let's move to the contract. We have, I think, six items totaling about a million dollars. And we'll take those as a group, but John, if you'd walk us through those and then if you see anybody that raises their hand, go ahead and take the question. And then we'll vote on them as a group.
Okay, that sounds good. The first item that's up is an ARF vehicle. And ARF stands for Airport Rescue Fire Fighting Vehicle. That's a, basically a specialized fire truck. It comes with a lot of extra gear and it's specialized for aircraft rescue. That is actually 100% funded by the FAA, which is great. That's part of the COVID recovery that's coming down through the FAA. And that represents a critical piece of gear on the airport because of the size and the frequency of the flights, the aircraft that we have at the airport now. We need to have this second truck. We're due to actually replace the one that we have, but we're going to maintain both of them because we need to have two trucks. So that will keep us within what's called the Part 139 regulations. So that truck, again, as I said, that's 100% funded. The amount, we're looking to contract with Oshkosh. That's one of the two groups that bid on this project. And I'll pull up the, I brought on that one. But that's for 690, the total project's $699,380. And as I said, that's 100% funded by FAA grant. Now, part of that as well, we do not have the grant yet. It's not been, we haven't gotten the formal offer letter from the FAA, but it's actually been announced already on the federal level. We did receive that from the FAA. So that will be coming relatively soon as an offer letter. So we'll, I guess, be back to have you accept that grant. I'm not sure exactly how committee wants to authorize that. I think last time we had a resolution authorize Eric to accept that grant. So it's almost a two-parter, I guess, if you want to take it that way, with number one, entering into a contract with Oshkosh, number two, accepting that grant when it comes through. So that's the first item. The second item on the list is a change order. And this is a change order for Quality Enterprises. And they're the group that worked on most of the airfield projects for us so far, the taxiway. And then this was the runway extension. And there was a little bit of grant money left in this one. And so we entertained a change order with Quality to add some, some matting around our airfield lighting. And these are basically heavy rubber mats that get staked down and it helps to keep vegetation off of the bases of the airfield lighting. And it also helps to prevent a little bit of erosion when we have the thunderstorms and the heavy rains at the airfield. So it becomes a safety improvement for us at the airfield as well as a reduction in our long-term maintenance costs. So that was the vast majority of the change order. And the change order was, results in a contract increase of just over $264,000, but it is all covered by an FAA grant. But since that's an increase in the contract price, it will come to you as a committee and then on to council. That's the second item. The third one on the list is our summer marketing effort. And this is a cooperative marketing effort that we've done for the past three years with the Hilton Head Walton Chamber of Commerce and their visitor convention bureau. And what we do is we team with them and we use kind of their marketing power, obviously, to get the message out. This is strictly a digital campaign that we do with them. And we use their marketing consultant to put this together. So again, we're going from marketing in one city to now marketing in 13 different cities, plus some of the key connecting cities. So as you can imagine, it's a huge effort to try to get some word out to those different cities to draw people into the island. So that's, it's a $75,000 item that we're doing with the VCB. Break it up into three payments of $25,000 apiece. And that is 100% reimbursable by Town Hilton Head Island ATAX funds. So, but again, it's reimbursable. That's why it comes to you first as a committee item. All right, the next one is a janitorial contract. We do the short-term contract. And this is with Low Country Commercial Services. They're located close to the airport on Hilton Head Island. And the reason we're doing this is we really need to raise the bar on the janitorial services that we have in the terminal. As I mentioned, we've got a record number of people coming through that terminal and using the facilities within that terminal and creating, you know, a different level of effort that needs to be expanded in order to keep that building clean. And our existing contract within the county was, was not able to answer that for us. They were not able to provide the level of service that we needed. And so the airport has, has decided to go in a different direction. And Low Country Community Services or Commercial Services will be providing a short-term. We've got a 90-day contract is what this represents. Inside of that 90 days, we're going to rebid the opportunity for the airport custodial and janitorial services to see, you know, who, who else may respond. We did bid this once, but we did not get satisfactory responses. So this will be kind of a bridge effort, just for the next couple of months that we can bid this out. We anticipate that Low Country Commercial will probably bid on that larger contract as well. And then the final one is a very easy one. It's just an update with the power agreement that we signed with the FAA. And every couple of years, this just comes up so that we can relay to the folks who are the signing authorities at both ends, both the county end and the FAA end, as staff changes. So we just update the agreement to reflect the latest folks who need to sign that. And that's, that's all this is, is updating it on our side for Eric's signature. And that's all we've got for the airport at the time.
Hey, any questions for John? Okay, anybody want to vote on any of these items separately?
Gerald, Gerald had a question.
I have a question.
Yeah, go Gerald, go.
John, good presentation. On the janitorial services, item number 12, most of these contracts that we contract out for janitorial services for the county as well as for the airport, are they providing health benefit coverage for their employees?
That, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe they do, but I would have to check and get back to you on that.
All right, and if they don't, then can we consider asking them to put that in their bid?
I can look at that and talk with Dave Thomas and see how we would handle that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I sense that that could be answered at the next council meeting if this moves forward for approval. Okay, not seeing any other items. I'm going to look for a motion to approve these six items together. They're a little over a million dollars, about 93% reimbursable by others. Look for that motion. I couldn't hear who was, but the second?
York made the motion and I will make the second.
Great, okay, any objections? Hearing no objections, these items are approved. Then move on to council for those that require council approval. The next block of items is primarily the renewal of existing contracts heavily in the solid waste area. It's, they're under item number 14. And if, between Jared and Dave Thomas, if you all would walk us through those. And again, if you have questions along the way, ask and we'll see if we can take these up at, all at one time.
Dave, are you there?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Dave Thomas, Director of Purchasing. I would like to make a point on the actual agenda. It's listed A through J. If you look at item G and go across, it says G2, G2G waste tire hauling. So that is another separate contract. So there is actually a total of 10 that should be listed on the, on the actual agenda. And it is listed and covered in the list of documents that we provided on the Excel spreadsheet. But as Mr. Chairman stated, these are, most of these are for solid waste contract renewals to include DePuske Islands, DePuske Transfer Solid Waste with Dolphin Shared Management. If they had any increase, it would be due to COVID-19 or fuel cost, which is our acceptable. A and B Cleaning, that cost did go up from what we paid last year and that was due because we added additional buildings to their contract. But some to your questions, if you want to talk or pull any of these renewals apart, aside and talk about it when we can, but I recommend we move forward with approving the renewals.
On I, A and B Cleaning Services, just haven't heard what we heard from John Rimbold about the airport. Is A and B Cleaning Services currently, was, was that amount for the airport included in this? Or was that already under a separate contract?
It's a separate contract, okay.
I didn't know if we needed to reduce the amount.
No, sir.
I have one. The folks who made public comment made some interesting comments. Any way we can address those? Any way we can address those?
The gentleman that made the public comments, that's great. You know, we're all for making sure we treat everybody fairly in our responses to our RFP. If you had anything permanent that would be a valid protest, he can write and send a letter to me protesting his, his concerns. But we went through the process. I think Jared probably had touched this with Cindy Carter, our manager for solid waste, but they'll, they'll address this as well, why we selected waste management for the actual contract that we're going to talk about. Is this what you're talking about, the $100,000 contract? We can address that when we get to that part.
Yeah, that's actually item number 15. It's not a renewal. Okay, any other, any other comments?
Yeah, Jared has a comment.
Sure.
Gerald or Gerald?
Both. Gerald and then Jared.
Go ahead, Jared.
No, no, Jared doesn't have a comment.
Okay. Dave, I just asked a question about the cleaning contracts and the health benefits that these contract providers give to their employees. Do we know whether this contractor supply health benefits to their, his employees?
I will have to check back with our, with our contractor, A and B Cleaning. I know they provide retirement, but I'm not really sure about the actual healthcare because most of these jobs are part-time. They're not full-time. Now, they might have health benefits for their full-time managers, for the folks that actually do the cleaning in the evening that probably don't have healthcare, but I can get back to you on that.
All right. So if, if by chance they don't have healthcare coverage for them, then I would suggest that we not approve this until we actually assure that they do have health coverage and at what cost, what, what that, what that costs them as far as increasing this contract bid.
I would recommend that we can always look at that and go ahead and prove what's, what's current brought before you. And if they are offering healthcare, we can always bring it back to, to raise our price because it is going to cost some money if we have to go and cover their health services.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment on that, if I might. Yes, go ahead. Talking about health coverage, you need to be careful that you're not stepping on the Affordable Care Act because Affordable Care Act plays into a lot of this. And so you can't really talk about healthcare in isolation. You have to talk about it in the context of how the Affordable Care Act applies in each particular situation, or it doesn't. So it's pretty complicated. So I just caution everybody, if we're going to talk about healthcare for anybody, let's make sure we understand how it coordinates or doesn't with the Affordable Care Act.
Mr. Chairman, I had a comment.
Yes, Alice.
I'm very glad to see the electronics waste and the household hazardous waste services continue. This is a very important service that we do for our county and our constituents. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so what we have before us here is about $6 million in renewables, plus about $600,000 for the cleaning, so a little short of $7 million. I think there's a issue been raised that could be answered at, at council relative to the medical coverage that the folks have, being sensitive to Paul's comment. So I would also point out, it's kind of interesting, if you look at all the solid waste contracts, they, on average, they are about six-year contracts, and we're about halfway, on average, through those. And years ago, we used to take these up individually, and then we kind of thought that it made sense to do them as a group. But it is a good opportunity for us if anybody has concern in any one of these areas. The reason we're in the approval process is we can go back and revisit pieces that may not make sense. So anyway, open to a motion to addition of the one that Dave mentioned that was inadvertently left out for the agenda, but was included in the backup. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Does anybody want to vote on any of these separately, or is there any objection to these items? Hearing none, these items are approved as proposed. That takes us to item number 15, which is the one that we had the public comment on and the other comment that was made about the recyclable. So Dave or Jared, you want to walk us through this particular one?
Okay, this is the second. I can take it to the third. So this is the recyclable collection and processing services for Beaufort County, specifically for our convenience centers. Everything is dropped off there. We put the RFP out in March, March the 5th, the big close on April 16th, and a selection committee, committee received seven proposals to review. The, the review was, or the, the selection company was to provide containers for the collection of the recycling materials, to transport those materials, the processing, the processing of the materials, and the marketing and sale of the materials. All of that was included as part of the RFP request. In reviewing, there was, we had five members, three staff members and two collaboration recycling board members that made up the selection committee. The committee looked at the different bids that were received. We were looking for a, a contractor to provide all of those services at once, similar to the contract that we have in place. We were pleasantly surprised with the amount of proposals that were provided, but after looking at the pricing and ability, as requested or as mentioned earlier, we made one interview with the highest proposal, and those committee members then selected waste management after that, after hearing the interview. So this proposal is for a two-year contract with three additional one-year reviews. It's a unit rate contract, so it's defined by however many pools or how much waste is recyclable or deposited at our convenience centers for the estimated cost of $1 million, which has been budgeted in our fiscal 22 budget. So staff recommends the award of RFP 041621, recyclables, collection and processing, RFP services, the waste management.
Okay, open it up for comments.
Mr. Chairman, with the public comment from a new company that has come here, I'd like to have that addressed on why we can't have the glass pulled out separately.
That's and pay the county for the glass. Reverse your whole waste stream income.
Well, that, that, I mean, it conflicted from what I read, so, so what's the resolution?
There is no resolution. I mean, we've got to get away, this is the second time where we've had folks come in after the fact and said, well, you know, I can do a much better job if you guys give me a contract award, and I can go out and buy the equipment if you give me the contract where we had somebody do it with a ferry service. Now we have in this situation here with the recyclable contract. So, you know, they need to be ready, and they need to submit in accordance with everybody else, in accordance with the timeframes and the deadlines and the guidelines that are submitted. And that's the best we can do is recommend to you all, based on the information we're presented, based on the requirements of the RFP. Would county council like to come see the containers at my facility? So, yeah, so I mean, that's basically it. We're, we're going to, if we keep doing this and holding up recommendations for folks coming in after the fact, then we're going to run, we're going to run ourselves afoul of our purchasing and procurement procedures and open ourselves up to protests.
One more question, list of recyclables that are collected. Could you go through those, Jared?
Jared, can you go through the list of recyclables that are collected?
Cindy's online, she can try to do a better job than I can. There's quite a few of those, but Cindy, can you hit the recyclables?
Yes, we, we collect cardboard, we collect mixed paper, we collect glass, we collect metal.
Thank you.
Plastics, I forgot plastics.
Ones and twos only?
Ones and twos only.
Thanks.
I've got a question, if I might, but the first gentleman, gentleman mentioned that there was only one contractor who was brought in for an interview?
Yeah, I need to explain the process to him.
Yeah. Staff is allowed to do that if one company stands out above the rest lately as far as price and what they're bringing to the table. And I would also like to make the statement, you know, it's, it's okay for companies like this gentleman that made the public comment to complain. We want to know if there's any complaints, but he's got to be very careful. If he sits on our board, he can't be involved in the decision-making or voting for his company to move forward. So that's very unethical. We've got to be careful about that. But to answer your question is, the evaluation committee did go through the evaluation criteria that was published, went through the scope of work that was required, and waste management came back, even though that from time to time, it seems like waste management is getting the award. But so far, they're providing the best price, the best solution that the county can, can use for providing the service to the county.
Can you also address the comment that this did not go to the solid waste board?
There's nothing in our procurement code that says it has to go to the solid waste board.
Thank you.
That's the decision that the department made.
Okay, well, one question. This says, this is a two-year contract. Would it be renewable after the first year? Or Jared, you might speak to that. Jared and I spoke a little earlier, one of the, one, we actually have two options here. One would be to extend the current contract, the other would be the, do the, which would be for a year, and the, the other one would go with the new contract, which would be for two years, which does have some cost advantages, as I understand it. So Jared, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and so Dave, you're Friday, you're Friday.
I would just say that the two-year contract, we agreed to that with waste management. So they, when they use those, these containers and compactors, there's a cost. And so they, they need that two-year period to regain the cost they put out to buy those, that equipment. So that's why it's a two-year.
Okay, fair enough. Any other comments? Okay, is there a motion? Okay, I think that was York. Yep, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second. I will make the second.
Okay, Joe makes the second. Any further discussion? Is there any objection to this contract? Hearing none, this would be approved without objection. The next items are 16 through 20. They're kind of a miscellaneous group of, of items. I'm sorry, I think, I'm sorry, miscellaneous group of contracts, 16 through 20. Gerald, Jared, you want to walk us through these, and then we can perhaps take action on all of them together, if we would like to do so.
There's no problem. So the first one, item 16, is recommendation award at New Riverside Brewery Library Architecture and Engineering Services. This is a solicitation that went out in March with six firms submitted qualifications. The committee evaluated, evaluated the conditions and determined that McMillan, Paz and Smith Architecture was the most qualified. The committee actually was unanimous in this decision, so that's always good to see. So the bid that, or the proposal that was provided as part of the RFQ was a cost of $515,000 with a 10% contingency. That gives a total design cost of $566,500, which would be paid out of left-in library impact fees, which has a little over $3.2 million in fund balances. So staff recommendation on this would be to award to McMillan, Paz and Smith Architecture. Item number 17 is the resolution providing the 2020-26, reflecting the CBBG local containing, local funding, excuse me, local funding containing the required cost saving language for detour road sidewalk extension. So this was a resolution that was passed last year in order to make the application for the CBBG community enrichment funds for the sidewalk pathway in Whale Branch, near Whale Branch School. Upon grant approval, the Department of Commerce requires that a revised resolution be passed reflecting the project funding. So as mentioned before, in the application, the project funding, the project cost is We have 250 of that coming from the Seabrook Solar Farm donation, and 61,868 coming from road use fees, tax fees. The 200,000 remaining is the grant that was applied for and awarded. So this is a resolution to identify the funding source to go for this grant application that's been awarded. The next item, item number 18, is recommendation of award for the Brewer Memorial Stormwater Improvements. So this project was put out to bid on April 13th, and the bid ended with three bidders.
Are we going Green River Road? Or we're down to the next?
This is Brewer Memorial Stormwater Improvement. And this, this project, there was three bidders. This is a passive park that's co-owned with Beaufort County land, open land rest. It's designed to address the stormwater improvements next to the roadways to protect our creeks and rivers there nearby in the factory creek. Out of the three bidders, Trulove Construction was the lowest bid at $337,466.10 with a contingency of 10%. We have a total price of $371,466.10, which would be budgeted out of our stormwater utility fund that has a balance of $600,000. So staff's recommendation is award the Brewer Memorial Stormwater Improvements to Trulove Construction. Item number 18, or excuse me, 19, is a recommendation, recommendation of award for a non-competitive contract with the USCB Water Quality Lab. So this was a contract, originally it was a MOU that the county entered in 2013 with USCB to perform water quality lab services as part of our MS4 compliance program. It was renewed at a three-year interval in 2016, and over that time, it's been converted from a MOU to what we're looking at now as a contract. This is a contract over, that is cost shared between us and the municipalities, City of Beaufort and Town of Fort Royal and others. It was initially $90,000, but has grown over the years as we've, we've installed more data collection points, also added the municipalities, and also added some testing requirements. So the total contract value is $170,000, of which the county would be reimbursed by the municipalities, of which we have a MOU that we share costs with for services provided in their jurisdictions. Again, the services to provide the funding for staff and repair and purchase of equipment, sample analysis, and other costs associated with running the water quality lab. The staff recommends the non-competitive contract award to USCB for this contract. And I believe, lastly, item number 20, this is a recommendation of award for Battery Creek Pool Resurfacing. So we received one bid. It went out on March 11th and received one bid for Anderson Pool Company of $59,000. This is the third pool of which we resurfaced, of which Anderson Pool was the successful bidder on those previous tool in the same price range. So we feel like this is a fair and equitable price that was received. The cost of the pool, again, is $59,000 with a contingency of 15%. Since it's a lower value, we have 15% versus 10% for a total project cost of $67,850. The funding source of this would be the 2019 A Geo Bond with a current balance of $475,800. So staff recommends awarding this contract to, of the Battery Creek Pool Resurfacing to Anderson Pool Pipe Stream Incorporated.
Jared, do you want to go ahead and do the flyover with this and also the H? Jared, do you want to go ahead and do the flyover with this and also the HVAC addition for the old courthouse?
Yes, I can add this as well if that's okay with you, Councilman Rodman. Let me get to those projects. So, the recommendation of award for the HVAC replacement at 1501 Bay Street, which is the old federal courthouse, we went out solicitation, or April 29th that is, and we received two bids. The bids were, the low bid was from Coastal Air Technologies for a value of $950,000. This value was over the expected budget that we had internally, but due to COVID and some restraints as far as manufacturing restraints, we feel like this bid is in line with the market rates that we have today based off the proximity of the second-place bid. So, the bid total is $983,059. It would be funded from a transfer from the Sheriff's Department of $1 million that they have to put towards this project. So staff recommends awarding the project for the HBAC replacement at 1501 Bay Street, the Triad Mechanical Contractors, for $983,059. And lastly, the 278 flyover drainage erosion improvements. So this is at the base of the 278 flyover that we own and maintain. Staff recognized during the erosion, hearing that the outlet structures built was in the roadway, and this is to repair as soon as possible so it doesn't get worse. We put it out in the bid and we had two bidders. Tru-Luck Construction was the lowest bid of $147,530. So with a 10% contingency, the total cost of this project is $162,283, and this funding would come from stormwater funds as well with a balance of $350,000. So staff recommends the award of the 278 flyover drainage erosion control improvements to Tru-Luck Construction. And those are all the similar action items up for review. Councilman Rodman, I believe you may be on mute.
Yeah, I was, I was on mute, I'm sorry. Any discussion on any of these contracts? Anybody want to vote on them separately? Does anybody object to either these, any of these contracts? Hearing none, these contracts are approved without objection.
Motion.
Take that.
We need a motion.
Motion in a second, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, need a motion, okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Alice, motion, okay.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any objection? Hearing no objection, these are, these contracts are approved without objection. That takes us to items 21 through 24. I think they're somewhat in the routine nature, but Jared, you want to walk us through these?
Yeah.
21 through 24.
That's right. So, item number 21 is Pathway Project Virtual Meeting Summary. So there were two pathway projects. We held our 2018 Sales Tax Program, we held our second pathway public meeting as part of the Resolution 2914. Public meeting was from March 15th to April 11th, and it was held due to pandemic, it was held virtually and at www.bufrity.com.
Just go all the way over to...
We provided and advertised in emails as well as yard assignment. We only received one comment, which was for Bubba's Parkway, and no comments for New Village. So, there's not been any objections to any of these projects, these two projects, to program management, Beaufort County, the development of the final plans to get these projects constructed hopefully later this year. That is it in regard to item number 21. Do we keep going?
Yes.
All right. Item number 22 is a resolution establishing right-of-way acquisition policies as part of the sales tax referendum projects. So in no rumble, 18th, 2019, County Council adopted Resolution 2019-44, which gave the right-of-way needed, the pursuit of right-of-way acquisition needed by way of negotiations by agents or administrators of Beaufort County. What it did not include was the values of those negotiations. So what this is an update to that resolution, assigning values throughout staff, all the way from the right-of-way manager up to the county administrator to help expedite the project. The program is still governed by the internal, the IGA agreement that we have with DOT that requires us to conform to the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Act of 1970, as well as the South Carolina Code of Laws Title 57 and 28 in regard to right-of-way acquisition. So, what we're proposing is to add specific language to that resolution such that we can move forward with expeditious acquisition of this right-of-way to keep the program. We have probably well over 100 pieces of right-of-way, actually more than that, between the different projects on Ladies Island and all the pathway projects, so this will, rather than each one coming back to council for approval, this will definitely speed up the process. Those limits as described are for 50,000 up to the right-of, for the right-of-way manager up to 50,000, up to 100,000 in right-of-way cost for the Director of Transportation Engineering, up to 250,000 for the Assistant County Administrator of Engineering, myself, and up to 500,000 for the County Administrator for right-of-way acquisition per parcel. So staff recommends the approval of this resolution establishing the right-of-way acquisition policies as described. And then lastly, item number 22, this is land acquisition for Factory Creek to M2 Project. This is the definition of a public-private partnership at work. So this is an agreement that was entered into between county and developer in 2017 to develop a regional stormwater pond for water quality and water quantity. The project was that the county would own and maintain at the conclusion of the construction, so the developer would build it and then we would purchase it and maintain it thereafter after it was constructed.
Stay in the middle, because you're to go right over to...
The project has been constructed in addition to just a good public-private partnership. The county actually, the county's contractor used dirt during a nearby road paving project. So we got additional public-county partnership out of this. So, this is to purchase that pond now that's been created from Academy Park LLC for $1. So staff recommends the purchase of this parcel asset. And that concludes those items.
Isn't there a enforcement officer that we have to designate?
Yes, sir. Let me get to that.
You can pick that up?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, it's right here. So, the enforcement, so Beaufort County Stormwater Designation Committee works enforcement officers. So this is something we've done before. This would be installing new two, two new enforcement officers, which would bring our total up to six. We've had one or two that have moved away from the county since then, but again, we're adding a couple more. The new members would be, or new employees would be Judah Wood and Juliana Corbin, and it would give them the authority to help enforce our stormwater compliance as part of our MS4 program. So this would be, again, the approval of the designation of these two new employees.
Okay, so we have a list of, from 21 to 24, that Jared's done a good job of describing. Are there any of those that any members would like to talk about or have some questions?
Yes, Stu, I have a question, this is Mark.
Sure.
And this is just for information purposes, Jared, you can be as brief as you want, but just, obviously, as we start these pathway projects, and in my district, I've got All Joy, if you can just real quick, keep it simple, is what people expect, again, these ones are further ahead than All Joy, but when it comes to, that one's going to have some people that want to have some community input in it as we move forward, so how does the process work? Just so as we do these 20 different projects, what people can expect for their area.
Yeah, great. Yeah, so as council made force in a resolution prior, that we're going to have two public meeting opportunities specifically for each project, so for every pathway.
It's up a little ways.
At the very beginning of the project before we start putting in the paper. So as we're kind of defining the limits, what it's going to look like, how far it's going to be off the road, that's when that's going to happen. Then after we receive those comments, we're going to start the preliminary design, the survey, and start putting some in the paper. As we get ready to submit for permit, we'll come back for another round of comments, and we'll take those comments as well as the comments that are received from permitting agencies and update the plans for what would then be a construction set of drawings. So, I guess in answer your question, one's at the very beginning, probably 10% into the project design, and then the second is probably about 60% into the project design, and those will be a month-long meeting is what our standard is. So we'll put it out, and hopefully we can get back to in-person meetings. We've had a couple, as mentioned, that were virtual, but we'll start doing that, and that'll be as we're getting to each road project and pathway project, we'll have that same standard.
Great, thank you. Stu, you're on mute.
I don't know how I keep going on mute, anyway. Yeah, is there a motion to approve these miscellaneous items?
Go move.
I'll second it. I'll second it, this is Mark.
Is there any objection? Okay, not hearing any objection, these items stand approved. Our next item on the agenda was to talk about the Fusky Island, and that was really there in case we needed to have anything to bring up, and we talked about it in executive session, and there's no action required, so we don't need to talk about that. I did put littering on because that came up. I think it's a longer discussion, we certainly can do it today, but in the interest of time, is anybody object to us moving us to the next committee meeting? Right. Hearing none, I think we've concluded all the business we had, and I think we had about 11 million in contracts if I did my math correctly, and any, anything else for the good of the body? Not hearing any, having concluded our, all of our agenda items, we stand adjourned. Thank you.